And that does it too.
Yeah, go ahead and start.
Okay. Going in live video and in live audio.
Here we go, Butch.
In five, four, three.
Welcome back to the City Council meeting. We will continue on with, let's see, discussion, I guess, number five of new accounting software for finance programs.
We'll be discussed.
Second.
All in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fennell?
No, we postpone to August 4th meeting with the new finance director.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? We have a motion to defer the new accounting software program with the new finance director to August 4th. All those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six, dog control workshop. Mr. Fennell, I'm going to make a motion for this to discuss.
I'd like to discuss dog control workshop in a day.
Second.
Before the mayor left, I asked him about this, and he said, "If you wanted to set up a workshop, you can chair it, feel free to."
Can I now?
Thank pardon?
Can I do it now?
You can do whatever you want.
I'd like to clarify, we have, next Thursday, we have two workshops, is that correct? Starting at 6:00.
That's your going to be as soon as?
For you, I'd be here. I would like to, I'll even leave it to, I would, I'd recommend it's going ahead, we've delayed it this long, have it next, next Thursday at 4:30.
Planning to something?
If there's not a conflict, that way we'll get three of them out of the way at one time.
So the budget workshop is at 6:00, goes in council.
After that.
At 7:00?
Earlier because there are citizens that are definitely interested in getting that thing back on track. If no one has any injections, I'd like to propose 4:30 on the 28th.
Okay.
Are those three workshops going to be put in paper? Not important.
It should be, I mean, it should be notified, paper will be notified, I don't want it to be put in paper.
Okay.
In what form would you like to see them? As part of an article or a?
I know we had a list at one time, people that wanted to be notified when we did set one up, if we could at least let those people know, and the press.
The press is here, so I bet they'll make note of it. We'll have the doggy workshop next Thursday at 4:30. Okay. Any other things on that?
Just like to ask those who have been interested so far, come with their, their ideas, that this is not a council workshop, this is a community workshop.
All right. If there's nothing else, we defer the second reading of land bank ordinance to our budget, mid-year budget workshop. Number eight, discussion procurement of a mower for the cemetery.
May we discuss?
Second.
All in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. Ms. Allen?
Mr. Reynolds, I would like to tell him how much I appreciate the effort he's put for into researching a new mower for, for the cemetery, and for bringing us all that information, certainly we appreciate that. So, he had an estimate for a mower that was 4,000?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred?
Yes, 4,490.
Okay. Does that include tax, do you know?
That does not include the sales tax.
Okay, and doesn't include the warranty and service?
Includes the warranty, does not include the non-year service. Extending itself.
Let's just include one. So we probably need to talk about whether we want just the basic service contract, or, if, if we decide we're going to go this way, whether we want the basic service contract or an extended one. This poor gentleman has been mowing the 42 acres with a, with a push mower for, what, four weeks, six weeks, all summer? We, we really need to get this gentleman, the equipment he needs, to do the job that he needs to do. I mean, if we can, if we can afford 48 percent of our budget for a police force, we can certainly afford $4,500 for a mower for our cemetery. I'd call for somebody else to turn it down.
Mr. Ray, there?
We're going to be having our budget workshop here pretty soon, and I, I feel that would be an appropriate topic for that.
Mr. Fennell?
It's at least two weeks away, if not longer, right?
I want to get some other people to sort of recognize you. All right, Ms. Allen. I'm sorry, I hear somebody else in front of you.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I like to keep them, you know, one at a time.
Right, I've noticed that. If I did my job on a computer and my computer broke down, I wouldn't want to be writing everything out longhand. If I was somebody else who did, if I was anybody who did anything and my, and my equipment broke down, and I'd been trying to do the best I could with way substandard equipment for quite some time, I would be distressed if people who didn't care about that sort of thing kept trying to postpone it, and postpone it, and postpone it. If I ran a kitchen and my stove broke down, I wouldn't want to be out on the sidewalk frying eggs. So I think we, I think we need, seriously need, to get a lawnmower for the cemetery right now. I think we need to appropriate the funds right now. That's my opinion. Now, somebody else can add a charge.
Mr. Raphael?
He needs to get a mower now.
Thank pardon?
He needs to get a mower now.
Now, right now?
Now. Why wait? He's going to get a mower. Why wait a couple of weeks? That seems like a, he's researched it, that seems like a, a good price on that mower. It's a sort of mid-level mower, and it's going to be a good mower for a long time, especially, I suggest if any kind of extended service contract you can get on it, they're mighty well-staffed.
I was going to say the same thing, but I think we're going to get the extended service contract.
Mr. Fennell?
I don't know what the proper procedure would be. We only have one city hall employee here. I would like to make a motion that we approve $6,000 from the general fund, for lack of a better place, because I know it was given, those figures. $6,000 from the general fund purchasing a new mower with a one-year service contract for the cemetery.
Second.
Okay, that motion's taken.
I'd like to amend that motion to, to ask Mr., to instruct Mr. Weaver immediately to write up that resolution, so that we can amend the budget by resolution as required.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Further discussion? Mr. Ray, now?
I'd like to locate the money first.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have a budget or finance person here, but I do recall that the figures that were given last meeting, when the planning commission was justifying their $1,500, that there was more than enough money in the general fund. I believe.
Probably is capital expenditure.
Capital expenditure, it was in capital, Mr. Fennell. Do we take the 6,000 from capital?
Mr. Ray, now?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, it doesn't seem like the people wanting the money know where it is, so I would defer this until we can be clear as to where the money is, and under which line to take it out of.
Also, just according to my calculations, the cost is going to be more like 5,000 instead of 6,000, that's with an 8 percent sales tax, which I think was only $100. I gave you a total of $460.
I mean, we asked, we asked him to come back with some quotes, which we got tonight, and, you know, wait till we find out where the line item is, that we can take the money out before we appropriate the money. This is moving a little bit too quickly, so, you know, they'll get their mower, but we need to do it in orderly fashion.
Mr. Allen?
This has not moved quickly, we've been talking about it for over a month, probably six weeks, almost two months. There's got to be money here. I say we take it out of the mayor's budget somewhere, but I will figure it out.
Mr. Allen?
I will amend my motion, because I found my notes, it says $37,000 available in capital improvement, so I'll make a motion that we approve $5,000 based on a resolution written by the attorney tonight for the lawnmower for the cemetery commission. I, I wouldn't want to wait another two weeks if I were mowing.
Second.
He amended his motion.
Do I have a motion on the floor? Prior to that motion?
I amended my motion.
He amended the motion.
Okay.
And Ms. Allen's seconded, I guess she approved the second, I think she did second. Mr. Ray, now?
With all due respects to the cemetery commission, I, I just can't see the grass growing that much in this 100-degree heat. I don't see we're waiting two weeks to purchase a mower, that we do this in an orderly fashion. We're just stabbing in the dark here, we're finding money. I just, you know, if, if it was raining cats and dogs, and the grass was growing like crazy, maybe, yeah, there may be some impetus behind it, but, you know, things ain't growing.
Any other comments? All right, we do have a motion in seconds. All those in favor, say five, say aye. Motion, I'd like to, to, to...
To approve $5,000 from the capital improvements fund, and ask Mr. Weaver to write a resolution, and Ms. Allen's seconded.
Okay. Whoops, Mr. Weaver?
You guys want to take a break, so I can do that, because I don't have a computer.
I move that we...
It's handwritten.
I move that we take a break, so the city attorney can...
We're, we're, we got a motion already on the board.
Table the, move to table the motion for 10 minutes.
Motion hasn't passed yet.
Second.
We've already had a motion, we've already had a second on there.
Let's go.
All those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
What's your vote?
You looking for something?
Your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Table motion?
Now we need to table a motion.
I move that we table this discussion for 10 minutes, while the city attorney writes a...
Point of order, I, I don't see why we need to stop business, the attorney can write the motion while we can continue our business.
He's a disaster, he's a disaster. You've got to get me access to a computer, it's all you got to do.
Is there not a motion on the table, please?
I tried.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion to table for 10 minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, here we go, we're into live video, live audio, five, four, three.
All right, welcome back. We have a resolution that has been written.
Before you consider this, I want to caution you, the clerk and I went down and put this together for you. I'm not sure, and I don't know, I don't think the clerk is either, and I'm going to speak directly for her, we don't know where this funds should come from or go to. We really probably should have the input of somebody from the finance department to tell you which line it goes into. We took what you said at the table, and the best we could, we put that into this form. So if it isn't coming out of the wrong place, it'll be an improper act. And if it's going into the wrong place, it could be an improper act. Think before you vote, is the only caveat is.
My understanding is that you can approve an expenditure and do the resolution after effect. As the $1,800, or $1,500 was...
Mr. Fennell?
Can we discuss the, or is that just?
Well, we can. I mean, we make a mo, I mean, we make a motion to read the resolution, have a discussion of the resolution. We don't need to read it, we should do like we did the last time, make a motion to discuss the resolution.
Make a motion that we assign a number and read and discuss only.
Don't we have to take this off the table first?
What off?
We tabled this to take a break.
Yeah.
So...
Move to bring it back to the table.
Second.
All in favor, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now you want your motion?
I move that we assign a number and read and discuss only.
Point of order? If we read this, it passes.
No, it doesn't.
No, we...
We've done the last three.
We did the last one, just on discussion. Now, Mr. Weaver?
It was my, it's my understanding, the council of the last couple, the last one of these changed the procedure. And you can do, do it either way. In the past, the procedure has always been that when it was read, or when it was voted and then read, that it was passed at that time. But last time, the motion, the way it was stated, and the way this motion is stated, it would not pass upon its reading, it would pass at a vote taken subsequent to that reading after discussion.
So do we need to read it again?
You can do it either way you want to do it. But you need to make your motion clear, whether you're passing it, or whether you're simply reading it for discussion.
Signing a number and reading it for discussion.
Second.
We have resolution 583.
All right, now that we need a vote on that. Vote, it is for discussion. Signing a number, so, the motion is to read resolution 583 for discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Do you want to read it first? The motion was to read it.
Yep.
Resolution 583, a resolution making 2011 budget adjustment. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that the 2011 fiscal budget should be amended. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the cemetery budget be increased by $5,000. Section two, that the funds shall be removed from the capital improvement fund. Section three, upon passage of this resolution, all changes will be entered into the accounting program and the general ledger.
Question?
One of the reasons why I support reading it before we pass it, I'd like to see removed, changed, and moved, and a clarification that upon passage, that all changes, which I hopefully would cover Mr. Weaver's concerns, that the appropriate accounting program and ledger actions would be done with approval of this resolution, and if not, then it could come back to this table.
My concern is that you're telling him which fund to take it out of, and which fund to put it into. And if those are the inappropriate funds, that action cannot be taken, based on what you're passing here, and this may be an illegal resolution. Without consulting with someone from the finance department to know whether this is a fund that can be tapped at this time of expenditure, unless you know. I don't know. You're, you're the budgeting authority, so you should know. Or consult your experts, which is your finance department.
Before you go on, Tom, is it, it's the grass growing out there, and we do need the mower, but it's in the next few weeks. We may make, be making an illegal motion to you. You should be aware of what we were saying, Ms. Allen.
Well, we're supposed to be the budget experts, but you're supposed to be the legal expert. Could you not have written this up to cover our posteriors?
Not that I'm aware.
Not that you're aware. Well, then...
You're directing the funds to come from one place to another. I don't know if you're allowed to draw those funds from that fund, or not, and whether you're allowed to put it into the fund you're talking about today. That is a budgeting matter. That's what you have a finance director for, that's what you have a finance department for, is to advise you on which fund can go where.
Work with us for a minute here, Tim.
I'm trying to, I, I'm trying to warn you that you really need somebody to stop, like a minute, and call somebody. It may be very well that it's, it's perfectly fine. Well, I don't know. I don't know if it is or not.
Thank you for your opinion.
If this is, is an emergency. Obviously, we're going about this as an emergency. We can always come back and have an emergency move. Mr. Raphael?
Instead of capital improvement fund, can it say appropriate fund?
No, then you're, then, in my opinion, no, because in that instance, you are shifting your budgeting authority to someone else, to make that choice what fund. I think you have to act on someone else's advice if you don't know. But you're the ultimate budgeting authority, as has been said repeatedly at this table for the last 100 years.
I would suggest that we might want to really table this until we get the appropriate funding, and then if you want to have a special, a special meeting addressing this.
Do we have anyone in city hall that can give us a determination tomorrow?
Sure. Soon we're going to be in work, which I don't know we will be, but we have a finance director.
I'm ready to finish this right now.
I think we'd really be better off if we did what? And I understand that, you know, the, everybody getting antsy, wanting to get this done, because we've been, you know, the cemetery's been without a mower and all that, but, you know, waiting until Monday or Tuesday, the grass is still going to be there, unfortunately. And I know we're going to get a mower. Just making sure we do.
Well, we'll change on Monday or Tuesday.
Well, we'll be able to find out exactly where the, where the money is going to be coming from, from fund, where we kind of...
We'll wait two more weeks, two weeks from...
We have a special meeting, because that's what the council... And that will take us 15 minutes today, because we can only have one item on, on the meeting.
Okay, well, then, I say we go ahead and do this now, and, and then whoever can check with the financial director, and if we need to change it, we can then have an emergency meeting on Monday.
It's an illegal motion. If Mr. Weaver's saying...
We, we can change it at an emergency meeting, or a special meeting on Monday, or even tomorrow, if we need to.
Mr. Fennell?
If, if we haven't expended the money, all we're saying is we want to move money in from one account to another. We aren't necessarily with this resolution saying we want him to go out tomorrow and spend that $5,000. Can we not? If, if the words are wrong, you know, we, we aren't saying that we're going to spend the $5,000 within the next 24 hours, we're saying we want to move it from here to here, and if somebody could look at this at 8:30 tomorrow morning and say, yes, then we're done, if not, call a special meeting. We aren't spending the money, we're saying we want it moved from this account to this account, which is a little bit more than some of the departments do, whenever they just spend the money anyway, whether it's there or not.
Mr. Ray?
Once again, with all due respects to the cemetery commission, we're willing to entertain approving an illegal motion to cut the grass. Something that could wait just a few days, we can have an emergency meeting, we don't have to stick ourselves out on a limb and do an illegal vote on cutting the grass. So, as Mr. Barry said, the grass will be there next week, and we can address this in an orderly and timely manner with due diligence and all the facts before us. So, with all due respects, I don't see what the rush is.
Mr. Raphael?
Um, where is this mower coming from?
Fairville.
Fairville, I know for a fact that Fairville equipment will let you test drive it. By the time you're done test driving, we'll have this resolved. They let city of Fairville, city of Green Forest, test drive mowers for months. You could explain the situation, I'm sure they knew it.
It's the mowers.
Ms. Allen?
Would it be possible to pass this tonight with a, on the contingency that it doesn't go into effect until tomorrow after we've checked with the financial director?
That's not what it says at this time. It could be made to become effective later.
That's what I'm asking.
But it doesn't do that now.
Well, now, we can fix it.
Now it puts the money in to the hands of the cemetery commission. But wait it's passed and signed.
So I'd be, I'd be willing to pass it tonight contingent upon its approval for correctness tomorrow at which time it would go into effect. And, and you can help us walk through what it needs to say to cover us. You can do that. If you really wanted to, if you really were the city attorney, you really could help us.
I am the city attorney. I would ask for a policy.
Could you please help us, please?
I, I apologize. Thank you. I've been newly elected for eight years.
True.
Actually for nine years now. But I, we're not going to fight. Now, I can't help you, I can put the wording, if the wording is proper, but I cannot tell you which fund is proper or not.
Understood.
And so, changes I make to it, we made changes in the morning, we still have to come back and be approved by you. But if we make, if it didn't mean any changes, then it'd be cool.
Mr. Allen?
Well, since the city attorney is... Well, since the city attorney is breathing down my neck towards the other direction, uh, I'd like to propose a change in this resolution that in section three, upon passage of this resolution, with all changes being entered into the accounting program and general ledger after validation of funding, to me would, would make it legal, if it's not available, then this resolution awards to that effect.
We still have section two, which might be illegal.
Can we write a resolution that says we approve $5,000 for the cemetery commission to buy a lawnmower with the finance director moving the appropriate funds to their account for expenditure?
Does it mean?
Yes.
I don't think so, because if you do that, you're giving up your authority to determine where those funds come from and where they go to, you're giving that to the finance director to make that determination, and if she does improper thing and takes it out of there, out of the wrong fund, you give your authority to someone else, I don't know, it's a sit, I really think, I'm always sit, I really think, let, this means the blessing of somebody in the finance department.
I think we're all gonna test drive it, find out what's going on tomorrow, because especially we need to be able to deal with the matter of money, find out where it's, where it had to come from, you said yourself, take 15 minutes, but I didn't, I didn't test drive it, you may not wonder if you came up with it, and they will let you do that, according to Mr. Rockwell.
Mr. DeVeau?
I'll call the question.
Need a second. Call the question. Keep on talking, Ms. Allen.
Probably in section one, where it says that the cemetery budget be increased by thou-, $5,000, don't think the cemetery, do you have a budget?
No.
So we'll have to add a line item also, we'll have to add a cemetery budget or a line item or, so we'll have to do that too.
Sounds like we're getting a big, big review. So we, so everyone table this, or defer it?
I'd like to refer to Monday or Tuesday for a special meeting, actually talk with finance, what's, what's, I know what's going on, you know, like you said, it won't take 15, 20 minutes to get it done, meanwhile, we'll test drive it, it could be a great idea.
Your motion is to defer this till Monday or Tuesday?
Yes.
Until, it's per, until we determine the exact-
Where the money can come from?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Got a motion, second, discussion on that, Panetta?
Do we want to be proper to take a straw vote to find out how many council people would be available for that meeting?
No, because we'll have to probably find out what date it is, but I think we can all make that, it's been an emergency, it won't take that long. Okay, got a motion, a second to defer this until Monday or Tuesday, until we talk with finance director to find out, and we'll call a special meeting to discuss this, and what ended in a resolution, or something, something along that. We had a motion to table, which should supersede-
Yes.
Your motion to-
Table or postpone?
Table.
Table until, uh, Monday or Tuesday. Okay, everybody understand what we're doing?
Yes.
Postponing this until Monday or Tuesday?
All right, all those in favor, sing a clap, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go call vote, yeah. That's okay.
Clarification.
I think we're postponing.
We're, we're postponing until Monday.
Postponing to a certain time. Postponing is different than tabling, yes?
Postponing setting it like, or approximately that date, so we're done. All right, roll call.
Please, just for clarity sake, repeat the motion one more time?
Motion is to table until Monday or Tuesday and then have a special meeting, it was postponed, then it was changed to table, what is it today?
Postpone.
Postpone, yes.
I said postpone, got it?
On Tuesday, till Tuesday, let's get it done.
Very good, thank you. Second.
So since it's being postponed, do we need a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Then we can table?
It probably should be.
Tim Hana?
Yes.
James Vito?
Yes.
Eddie Bance?
Yes.
Parker Raphael?
Yes.
Dr. Kirk Patrick?
Yes.
Mike Zero?
All right, we'll get you a date, probably around 5 o'clock or, on Tuesday, and we'll get, we'll get the, the jar a little bit.
So we don't have a problem like we did with the land bank money, we, we do have a capital budget number and item in the budget for the cemetery, so that should not delay anything.
Get all that questions, take care. One way or the other, we'll get $5,000 to, to buy more for the cemetery, in the meantime, y'all go get it, test drive it, see whatever y'all need, whatever they want.
There's another second question for, may I ask a question, are we allowed to attend that meeting?
Absolutely, it's per, it's open meeting. It's ten until 5 o'clock, that's-
Until 5 o'clock on Tuesday?
Mr. clerk, would you confirm that with us all when it's, it's about?
Yes, ma'am.
Very much.
All right, uh-
I'll send you to discuss item nine.
We got a second to discuss the workshop on FOIA, have a second?
Second.
Diane had talked to municipal league attorney Mark Hayes, and he is willing to come up and give a workshop, he was wanting to know, which is kinda strange, what part, Diane, you wanna come up and explain exactly what he was asking?
Um, I talked to Mark Hayes with the municipal league, and he said he doesn't mind coming up and do a seminar workshop regarding FOIA, he was just curious if there was any specific areas you wanna touch on, um, so he kinda can prepare in advance if there are certain things that you're concerned about, or if it's a general, a general, just a general meeting, and he'll probably bring David Shum with him, he said.
I'll make it very simple, anything that applies to municipal government, whether it's commissions, councils, or elected officials, I don't know how, how much clearer we can add, you know, there's not, there's not too much that we can really zero in on other than saying, tell us about FOIA, but I think as, as far as long as it applies, directs his education towards the commissions, council, and city hall.
We will get back with him, I know he's busy for the next month, up until August sometime.
We can give a date, he said he wanted, he was curious first, and then he would let me know, and I told him it'd probably, you know, a month out, just for the fact that we wanna get everybody notified, the commissioners and stuff like that.
Will it be any fees associated with it?
No, no fees, he'd be more than happy to do that.
Be charged for outsiders to come?
All right.
Thank you, Diane.
So we will continue on and try and set up a date, and get everybody, um, keep everybody informed on that.
Motion to discuss.
Okay, motion to discuss item 10, vacation, vacation, uh, vaca-